I'm the Councilmember Steve Blackie, Director of Public Works. On August 17th, City Council authorized staff to hire a consultant to do a damage assessment report on the Wichita Valley Center flood control project primarily because of all the flood damage that had occurred within that corridor. And we needed that report to be able to present to the Army Corps of Engineers to ask for their assistance in helping us repair the areas that have been damaged by the flood. That report is complete. You have received a copy of it. M.S. Mitchell, Flood Plane Management Specialist, is here to explain the findings of the report in a brief summary. And I do want to say that the reason that we hired Mr. Mitchell is primarily because he used to be the Flood Control Director and has a great amount of experience in this area and also has expertise in dealing with the Corps. So we feel like we have received a good report and I'll turn it over to Mr. Mitchell for his review.
Thank you, Steve. Mayor, member of the City Council, I am M.S. Mitchell, Flood Plane Management, Land Development Specialist. Here today to present my report on the flood control project damage assessment and to answer questions you may have about the report and the project itself. First, let me describe the process I used to write the report. Made a land reconnaissance in company with the Flood Control Office staff, starting at the Little Arkansas River floodway northwest of the City of Valley Center, followed the route of the 1993 floods down that floodway, on down the levee Arkansas River to Control Structure Four, from there on down the Big Slu Kouskin Creek floodway, the Big Ditch, to its confluence with the Arkansas River, and then back up the Arkansas River to Pawnee where the original alignment of the Riverside levee ended. The next step was to take an aerial reconnaissance of the same parts of the flood control project with an additional aerial tour of the levee Arkansas River from Bentley Road to Ridge Road where the Little Arkansas River floodway empties into the Arkansas River, and from there on down the floodway. Now, that aerial reconnaissance produced 13 rolls of film from which the photographs that are included in the report are taken. The text was written using the notes and snapshots taken during the land reconnaissance, the aerial photographs, recent aerial photo enlargements of the area of the project, and a set of the Corps of Engineers' project construction plans. I made reference to past problems, method of repair and maintenance, et cetera, based on my experience where those were needed for emphasis. I'd like to go on to some of the further slides. The basic outline or the basic concept of the Corps of Engineers' project was to intercept flood flows of the Little Arkansas River at a place above Valley Center where wing levees could go stretch from flood plane to flood plane, divert them into a levee Arkansas River, carry that flow down to the point where the flood control project structure, Control Structure Four, would permit two-thirds of the water to go flood, of the design flood to go through the floodway project and one-third to go back into both the Little Arkansas and Big Arkansas Rivers. This is a slide showing the area upstream on the Arkansas River, upstream from where it diverts into the Big Slu Kouskin floodway. And the reason for showing you is just on the left, after the river makes a bend, you can see a place where the river bank is very close to the levee itself, on the right-hand side or the west side, and where a large area of trees has accumulated on the other side of the river. In this reach of the Arkansas River, starting from Bentley Road and coming down to Control Structure Four, one of the main concerns is to keep that river channel away from the levees. The original Corps design set a minimum of 300 feet for that foreshore distance, and it's been difficult through the years to try to maintain that separation by dozing the sandbars and islands and keeping the river channel centered. Well, I have missed, yes, there it is. At this location, the flow, combined flow of the Arkansas River west of the city of Wichita in Sedwick County and the Little Arkansas River flow that's come through the diversion channel and anything coming from the three branches of Chisholm Creek is diverted by Control Structure Four. And you can see the water to the right going down the river channel, and the water to the left end is being diverted into the floodway. Okay, this is the step set seven feet above the bed of the Arkansas River that controls the amount of flow that goes through the river channel and the amount of flow diverted into the floodway. You can see here, even with a very shallow depth of flow, there's no indication of problems in this portion of the floodway. What you don't see at that stage is what you see on this slide where the scour in the bottom of the channel and the scour and loss of banks along the sides of the channel were caused by the May floods. And the white line that you see across the center of that slide is a temporary, secondary weir or step that was built there by the flood control people following the May floods. And you can see that there's still a number of scour holes in places where the channel bottom has been eroded badly, both upstream and downstream from this location. This is one of the major places where we feel that permanent construction ought to be done in the form of sheet piling and heavy riprap so that this is not a continuous problem between here and Zoo Boulevard and is controlled from then on. This slide and the two that follow it are of the area of the floodway from Highway 54 to south of K-42 and down around 31st Street. And what I wanted to call to your attention here is that it's this area where water rode up on the slopes of the levee for a considerable height and where sand deposits in the channel have pretty well obliterated the designed channel. And therefore, the carrying capacity in the center channel of the project has been partially lost. And because of the sandy soil and the fact that the water was up higher than on the levees here than in other locations, seepage contributed to the ponding problem. And in the left-hand part of the slide above the crossing for K-42, which runs right through the middle, you can see an area of water outside of the levee. Earlier in the flood sequence, that body of water extended all the way across Hoover and almost over to the lake that is on Sessman's property in the extreme left. This is the temporary weir that was built by the flood control people just upstream from MacArthur Road to make a halt to the bottom erosion or head cutting that was occurring in that area between Kouskin Creek and MacArthur Road and above. Their concern was that if that head cutting had been permitted to continue, there's a major sanitary sewer line less than a mile upstream at 31st Street, and if that had been undercut and broken, that could have caused a serious problem. This is the same weir, and you're looking upstream, and you can see that even having stopped at this point, there's still considerable amount of scour in the bottom of the channel. This is from MacArthur Road looking downstream. The line at the bottom is a pipeline that was exposed. And what you see to the left is a scour hole which occurred from the left bank of the channel toward and very close to the left levee. This is another area where until the water went down in August, there was no indication that there was a problem in this area at all. So had that scour hole been permitted or had it eroded further to the levee, the levee would have begun to disappear before anyone would have had any notice that there was a problem. The rest of these slides, this is from downstream of MacArthur, looking at the bridge upstream, you can see the depth of cut into that bank. And some of the area that's been filled, right here at the bottom of the picture, is the beginning part of the repair done by the Flood Control Office. And that's the last slide I have. And before I respond to questions, let me express a little disappointment in the failure of the two federal agencies responsible for providing you and the citizens of Wichita and Sedwick County with two measures of the effectiveness of the flood control project during this summer's floods. The United States Geological Survey has the information necessary to determine how those floods compare with records for the Arkansas and Little Arkansas Rivers and for the project itself. Publication of that vital information will be of less value the longer it is delayed. Wichitaans deserve to know now. The Tulsa District Office of the Corps of Engineers has the responsibility to calculate and provide to you the flood loss prevented update based on floods from 1987 to date. You and the citizens of Wichita and Sedwick County need to know now if that figure is to have any bearing on the public's attitude about the project repair costs. I hope you read and digest the report, and I hope you strongly support your staff in its dealings with the federal agencies who can be of a measurable value in the present and future repairs, maintenance, and operation of the project. Thank you.
Mr. Keith?
With regard to the photographs you've shown and this one that's on the board right now, why wouldn't it be feasible to just let the river continue to cut a deeper channel in that area? Now, I realize there are some sewer lines and some things that might have to be repaired, but why couldn't we just let the river continue to do the excavation job that we've already commenced ourselves?
I think the example of the scour hole south of MacArthur and the incident that occurred in 1973 on the Arkansas River above 53rd Street where the erosion was unseen until the levee began to disappear. And if the channel is permitted to scour, it won't always stay in that center alignment and dig its hole in the bottom. We don't know why it started to go toward the left levee at this location, and we don't know for sure why it attacked the levee on the Arkansas River. It needs to be centered and as much protection maintained between those banks as possible. The only way to guarantee that is to have a fairly uniform cross-section so that the changes in velocity, which always accompany or are accompanied by a loss of energy, sometimes used to form a hydraulic jump, sometimes used to scour the bottom.
Well, I can certainly understand why we would want to stop a scouring hole from moving into the dike itself, but are you proposing that we would actually fill in some of the scouring in the river where, in the ditch where it's deepened itself?
Yes, I would, and to be sure that that scour or that velocity stays more uniform that well if it is diving and following those scour holes in the bottom. The cost of relocating the utilities, although it would be significant, I've not considered as being the major issue.
Well, since we dug this ditch in the first place and nature seems to be fortuitously digging it deeper, why are we filling the sand in? I don't understand that.
To control, to control the side erosion. You can't be certain that that scour will stay in the center of the channel.
But where it is in the center of the channel, are you proposing that it needs to in fact be filled in?
Yes.
Isn't that just moving the course of the river, inviting it to move to another location out of the center?
No, one of the design features of the original project was to create a channel that carried its flood flows in fairly low velocities, and then the higher flood flows would begin to go overbank where the velocities would be even slower. If the channel gets deeper and deeper, the velocities in that channel get higher as the depth of flow increases. And when that high velocity occurs, you can't predict where the scour will be. If we could be certain it would stay in the center of the channel, your proposal is good. We cannot.
You indicated something about removing trees that were along the bank of the dike, or did I misunderstand that? Are the trees, vegetation and so forth that are out of the center of the channel but kind of on the side or on the dike itself, is that helpful or hurtful?
There should be, there should be no trees right along the levee on any part of the project except Riverside Levee and the Arkansas River, which have as their channel a 450, 500-foot wide river channel. On the rest of the project, the Corps and I agree that those areas should be maintained in long-stemmed grasses without any tree vegetation or brush vegetation that could be high enough to accumulate bars and shoals. What happens is when the water, floodwater slows down around those obstructions, part of its bedload drops out and forms an embankment around those obstructions. Those should be kept clean so that the channel between levees is as uniform as it's possible to keep it. On the Arkansas River, those bars and shoals occur in the channel and have to be redistributed to keep that channel from meandering and getting into the levees on either side. A good stand of timber that is along the bank and where there's ample foreshore shouldn't be disturbed.
Well, I can understand that, but certainly where the trees are along the base of the dike on the Big Ditch, if in fact those trees slow the flow and cause a dropout of sand or other silt in that area, then isn't that reinforcing the very dike that we're trying to protect?
No, because that means it will have an increase in velocity somewhere in that cross-section and probably between that obstruction and the levee itself, which is the one place you don't want high velocity.
So if the velocity was not near the shore, wouldn't the velocity increase be in the channel itself, which is where you're wanting the water to go?
You're talking about putting trees in the channel?
No, I'm talking about if there are trees along the base of the levee itself or on the levee itself. It would seem to me that that would slow down the water, save the levee, and if there was any silting, it would cause the silting to occur right next to the levee itself.
Okay, the answer is again, at the edge of that obstruction, the velocity will be increased and therefore more of a danger to the levee whether the trees are on the levee or whether they're to toe of the levee or whether they're just inside. And I've given as an example what has happened to the Little Arkansas River floodway channel where trees did grow up in the channel and the side of the channel where the velocity was enough that it cut a new path either side of those obstructions rather than to scour the center of the channel.
Well, I'm not talking about the channel. I think we'd all agree on that.
The same, the same theory is true, that the obstruction will cause a higher velocity and you don't want that up against the levee.
Well, I can understand that we wouldn't want it against the levee. It would seem to me that if the trees were there, the siltation was falling out, as you told us a minute ago, that would then fortify the levee itself. But you're telling me that that's not true?
Well, it would if it didn't scour the levee itself in an exchange of energy. I don't think it's worth taking the chance, and I'm not sure what benefit the trees would be. I know what the dangers are.
Thank you.
Yes. Any other questions?
I just have one question on the money angle, but I would like to say I've always heard that if trees are in dikes and dams and so forth, they cause leakage to the root system. Is that correct?
Well, in some soils, that is, but that again is not the major consideration.
Okay, fine. That's just my comment. But on the money, on this $6,838 total cost, over what period of time do you think the city's share would be if all the agencies worked in concert with one another? Just an estimate.
Well, I can't make that estimate because I have no way of predicting what the financial arrangements of either the federal government through whatever repair programs are available or what the city will contribute.
Okay, let me ask, let me ask the second part. How much time do we have to repair what you pointed out?
If we have a series of floods next year, we have until now until next spring. I don't think all of the work can be accomplished by then, but I think we're at risk in these places that don't get repaired between now and then.
Okay, my next question's for Steve. Steve, what are we going to do about this large amount of money and the need, apparently an urgent need to do some of this?
Well, I think practically speaking, we'll obviously ask the Corps for as much as we possibly can get out of them. I think there's also going to have to be a large amount of work done out of our existing operating budget. From that point-
Now, which part, which part of the budget is that coming from?
Which part of the budget?
Yeah, what's going to suffer? We don't know yet.
Well, we'll just have to reprioritize, but I would suspect we would, we're going to be spending a large part of our time in the floodway doing these repairs over the next couple of years, one way or another. Now, that's the main mission of the flood control staff as it is. Typically, we have duties for them on an annual basis just to keep a level of service up on the floodway.
Answer my question. Thank you.
Thank you, Steve.
What wasn't said and probably needs to be said for the, for those that are viewing, that the total cost of all the repairs based out of Mr. Mitchell's assessment is $6,838,000. And it's broken up into several areas, and we'll probably make proposals in the future how we can systematically and prioritize the work that needs to be done after we find out what the Corps of Engineers is willing to finance.
Thank you, Steve. Mr. Churches, do you have something to add?
Steve, for the benefit of the council, does all of the recommendations made by Mr. Mitchell have to be approved by the Corps or any other agency prior to the time you start on some of this work?
Yes, and that's a good point to make. Prior to us beginning these repairs and even currently today, we have made submittals to the Corps of Engineers for permits to do some of the repair work. Any work that's done within the channel, we have to go through a permit and review process with federal government to get approval to do this work, and that will have to be done on each of these items that you see here.
Is there a Kansas agency and the federal EPA also have to give us permits?
Typically, what will happen, we will send our permit request to the Kansas City Office of the Army Corps of Engineers, and then they will also ask other agencies to comment on the work that we will be doing. So knowing what the turnaround time for that is, we're talking months rather than weeks.
Thank you. So really, today, we're looking at receiving and filing the damage assistance report and directing staff to pursue federal funding assistance, and there will be other opportunities to look at these individual pieces as they come back to us.
That's true. Yes.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone here from the public that wishes to speak to this? And I would say to my colleagues, if you can hang on here a few more minutes, I promise you a break.
Good afternoon, Mayor and fellow city council members. My name is Larry Ross, and I rise to share with you some of my concerns relating to the federal control, excuse me, the flood control project damage assessment report. This document, which would make a good coffee table book with Christmas coming up with the profuse number of photographs, refers repeatedly to the Big Ditch. I think, again, that term tells us a lot about ourselves and how, what we think about ourselves. The proposed remediation advanced in the document is simply not compatible with the state-of-the-art floodway, greenway, open space, planning, operation, and maintenance. The world is changing. Let's not go with the past. It is unfortunate if the proposed destruction of natural resources within the Wichita Valley Center floodway that is represented in this report is occurred to, is permitted to occur. The involvement on a continuing basis of the Greenways Commission and the City of Wichita Park and Recreation Department, neither of which are mentioned in the document, and I feel confident in saying that probably neither were contacted in the preparation of the assessment, should have been initially involved and should be involved on a continuing basis. I certainly hope that this doesn't suggest the level of cooperation that might be occurring between city departments and certainly projects where the Greenway Commission's involved. A major portion of the greenways are year-round wetlands, yet not a single mention of wetlands is in the report. Water quality, which is not necessarily a primary but is certainly a secondary concern, isn't even mentioned. And I've always assumed that putting street concrete and construction concrete along the banks was more than anything trashing the river. I've discovered in reading the assessment that it's actually armoring the levees and the, the project. I just wonder how many really bona fide engineering studies might be funded with the, an equivalent of $113,000, which is the EPA fine to Wichita on dumping in the Ark River. I'm also curious about, about the cost of the study. I'm not, I've never seen any mentions of that. As an engineering study, this document, I'm convinced, is weak and unconvincing. The number of pages devoted to color photographs far exceed the narrative, with the rationale for proposed action is really minimal. I believe what is really needed is a professional engineering study done by an established firm with environmental credentials in consultation with numerous federal, state, county, and local departments as well as city advisory boards to improve this corridor. The report is single-dimensional while we are living in a multi-dimensional world. It doesn't seem to be prudent to expend public funds, either local tax monies or federal funding, in single-dimensional projects. When this natural resource corridor offers a wide range of options, this is the wrong plan for today. We've come too far in the past 40 or 50 years. At the very minimum, I ask you to refer this report to the Greenways Commission and the City of Wichita Park and Recreation Department, which is charged with maintenance and mowing for their input and for continuing involvement in any action pursued in this corridor. Thank you.
Thank you, Larry. As I said earlier, it's my own personal opinion, and there may be other council persons to argue with me, that this was an attempt to determine and to assess the damage as quickly as possible, find out where and how much federal assistance might be available to us. And I think what you're suggesting is perfectly proper and possible after we know what the damage is, what money is involved, to sit down and certainly include the Greenways Commission and other folks in making decisions on how the damage shall be repaired. I think this council has given every indication since I've been around that we care very much about green space and the environment and the Greenways Commission. And my assumption is that it is really important for us to move very, very quickly, and what you're suggesting is, is a possibility. Thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak to this?
Vice Mayor, city council members. My name is Diad Huffman. I'm the chairman of the Sierra Club, and I would just like to also ask that prior to your pursuing federal funding assistance, that you get more environmental input from the planning department also. the planning department also, park and recreation, and the greenways. And we all know what the Corps of Engineers does not have the greatest track record in the United States in the last few years environmentally, and I would like to see us beautify our city instead of having it be just concrete as the big ditch is right now. It is not very pretty. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Let's go back to the council. Do I have discussion or a motion? Mr. Cather?
Well, I'd like to call your attention to the last of the written material in the booklet that we have here. It's on page 5-3. Very last paragraph, the next to the last sentence says, "It is recommended, as time and materials are available, channelization of the reach of the Arkansas River downstream from the BNN Railroad be continued." It seems to me that, to some extent, what part of, a big part of this report is recommending is channelization of the ditch itself, and in this one sentence that I've just read to you, of the river itself. And I don't think that's the direction that I'd like to see us move. I don't think that channelization of any portion of the river is appropriate. We've had a problem fairly recently with trying to narrow and channelize the Ark River along the Boeing landfill, and although that matter isn't resolved, it seems to me that that's not really the direction we ought to be moving. When you channelize this river and you narrow the banks themselves, you're just kind of asking for trouble. You're going to increase the velocity of the water traveling down the river and those kinds of things. So I'm not very satisfied with the report, and I think that what I'd like to do is see this matter be deferred for two weeks so that we can study it a little more closely and determine what we think ought to be done with it. I think that if we move quickly, what we're going to do is put ourselves in the mode of endorsing, channelizing the river, narrowing the river itself, and I think a number of other problems that we may not have really scoped out that are in this book.
Are you suggesting a workshop kind of?
Well, I would suggest that we just simply defer the matter for two weeks, and I would make a motion at a later time to do that. I think that I'd like to hear any other comments, other council members.
Mr. Cayman?
Steve, how urgent is this report to get in? It says it's urgent, but how urgent?
We were wanting to get the report to the Corps of Engineers before they tried to make any decisions with respect to design without our input, and also make any decisions on funding based on their own assessment rather than our assessment.
Is it possible to go ahead, I think Vice Mayor Cole mentioned this, that we go ahead and pass this vote on this, receiving the report? Go ahead and do your, what you have to do in order to present it to the proper authorities, and then efforts approved, can we look at the environmental aspects and make minor changes? Or are we, is it set in concrete, so to speak?
The biggest concern that I have is being able to have the approval to go to the Corps and show them the magnitude that we're talking about rather than the magnitude that I think that they feel we're talking about. I think we're off by a power of 10 or more in terms of what we think is wrong, and I'd like to be able to at least begin the process of telling them what we feel like the scope of the work would be. Now, we can get into design issues later and discuss some of the other issues that Mr. Cather brought up, but I'd still like to be able to get to the Corps immediately and show them that we have gone through a process, which I don't believe they've done to date, and show them what we feel like the scope of the work would be.
So you have nothing if a motion comes up saying we receive the report-